But notice was provided that this project was forthcoming and that all of those things needs to be removed. I understand that they are elderly, but it-
Okay, so I misunderstood. I had an assumption of the tree roots when they digged it out. So there's just a stack of papers?
No, he had a patio that was underneath the tall oak tree. And so when they took out the ball and the roots, the fingers of the roots-
Do you have pictures?
I do, first, yes. That I took on-site. All did as well. Like I said, we met with them multiple times, offered to at least stack them. But my concern was if we reinstalled it and that there was a trip and fall or a hazard, that we may be liable for that. So that's why we offered to just stack them nicely on his property.
So it was okay.
And that was declined, so.
All right. Okay, we'll go through the next one.
All right, next up, I have John Payne regarding the papers.
Yeah.
Well, the first you're talking about, who, papers were-
Can you please state your name for the doctor?
I'm John Payne, and they were Timber Ridge. We got in the late 94 restoration. Good job on the restoration in general until they got to my lot. And they pulled the palm trees out with a front-end loader, a crane, all around the lake. I had two big oak trees in front of my property, probably put there by the developer. And they decided they were going to pull them out. And I'll add this bigger out. And I says, you're going to be tearing up the papers? They said, yeah, well, if we do that, we'll fix them, quote unquote. The second oak tree, they decided to do what I suggested, cut the roots, and there was no damage. But why they didn't use chainsaws, I don't know. Anyway, I talked to at least a dozen people down there, the contractors. They all said they were going to fix this patio, all of them. And so the end, it was obvious that someone said they're not going to fix it. And as you already heard, I'm 85 years old. When I was told that I could do it, I says, I can't do that. It's different. So then I was told-
You just keep talking.
I was told that my neighbor could help. I said, well, I'm sorry, but that's the most estonized statement I've ever heard. It has nothing to do with my neighbor. It has nothing to do with me. It has everything to do with the Gateway, hiring a contractor to break something deliberately, knowingly, saying they can repair it, and didn't. So I had to get a contractor there myself. They paid $275. And I'm asking to get reimbursed for it, and I- My wife and I have been in Gateway for 22 years, between Pelican and Buzelvin here. And in my opinion, there's no way to talk to residents, especially senior citizens. I don't know what's going on. Doesn't make sense to me. They damaged it, to fix it. They said they would.
And then, just to-
Do you have pictures? I just wanted to-
Yes, I do.
I figured you had pictures. What is the address? I just want to make that a long report.
All the way to the end, right?
Yes.
Okay, I think I've been called.
And just to be clear, you're asking for $275, is what you're-
$275, the bill is right there with the file and, you know.
All right, thank you.
That's it.
So how many good for you?
Thank you, John.
Well, that's what people tell me, but I'm still physically-
John, what's the address? What is your address?
12854 Timber Ridge.
That's right.
Drive.
All right, for our next one, I have Rod Senior regarding an agenda item.
Would you allow me to distribute these before you start the clock, please?
Sir.
Okay. Rod Senior, Gateway Greens, thank you. Property taxes. My property taxes are not single-digit, Doug. Historically, as you said, Lee County, which is in red, on an IRR basis is 2%, even though it's capped at 3% homestead. There'd been 2% for a while. We have been increasing ours at 19% IRR over the last few years. And if you project that forward, we're going to be up to $1,900 by 2028, the component, our component of the, my property taxes. That's going to be half of the whole of the Lee County ad valorem, which is unacceptable. $58 million bond, which I've always opposed, amortized over 20 years. If we spend it at 5%, is $90 million with interest. That will add a further $750 debt service to our property taxes spread over 6,000 homes. Plus $200 debt service for the $17 million spent on Pond Bank restoration will put debt service alone to $1,000. I have more, I'll have more to say on that on August the 14th. Remember, the CPI is only 2.5%. So yes, Carol, I'm not comfortable with 13%. No, Doug, single digits is not historically correct. Yes, Bob, the high watermark should come way down and add the $170 you're looking for is equivalent to $13 million within capital projects at 5%. Okay, soccer fields. $16 a square foot of artificial turf is too risky with too many unknowns, and they, in my opinion, would eliminate that option. Others have tried it. It's too hot and it's too hard. A surface in the UK, Blue Jays tried it at the Dunedin Spring Training Camp, didn't work for them. Before you make any long-term investment decisions on the soccer fields, we've got to decide whether soccer-centric facility is needed and wanted. It might have been good 20 years ago, may not be good for the next 20. Who is telling you that we need five soccer fields? Is the tail wagging the dog? In 1998, we had two and it was fine. How can you forecast the usage with accuracy for the next 20 years? A long-term contract with the user has got no teeth if they quit. Suggest, therefore, that you continue with the $70 a year routine turf maintenance for another year, as you said, Doug, until you have got time to do due diligence, do an overarching strategic plan for sports facilities in Gateway. 320 kids playing soccer is 300 homes. Out of 6,000, you're doing all this for 5% of Gateway. Therefore, consider other things like softball, lacrosse, running tracks, even halving the acreage that we've got. We're the ones who are paying. The guys who are using it are making good money. For example, GSA, 800 kids, 350 bucks a year, they're getting $280,000 into their coffers, not into ours, which costing us half a million in maintenance. Therefore, how about the district considering running these soccer, these sports leagues and get some user fees into our coffers and not their user coffers? Thank you.
Mr. Rod, are there anybody else?
No.
Okay, can we follow back on this? I just want to clarify, the papers were inside or outside of the alley? I mean, out.
With the tree roots. Those collateral damage, tree roots, and it's always an item that is covered by the contractor.
That's what I'm thinking. What was the, who was the contractor? What was the dissection? Why did he say he didn't want to fix it?
I, it wasn't that he, I don't know that he didn't want to fix it. It's that it was outside of our lake maintenance season. We don't have, we don't have the rights to be on private property.
Well, it's his, it's his damage. We go to him and tell him fix it.
It was there because of the roots.
And if we need the homeowner to sign.
Well, the item is already fixed, so.
If he knew the roots were going up there, you would have, what you would have done is cut the roots-
Correct.
And not had the problem.
Yeah, I agree with that.
It's a contractor's issue.
Mitigation's also there.
So the direction from the board is to pursue the $275 reimbursement from that tower directly to the property owner?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Understood.
And I'll make a motion.
I don't need a motion. I really, direction is fine.
No, that was-
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Doug to contact the vendor to reimburse for the $275 for the root here. Second by Doug. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
We'll just need proof that this was paid, that you paid with-
The receipt should be there in that package.
That's an invoice. We'll need, I'll touch base with you, John.
Yeah.
I'll touch base.
All right, so the next item, local achievements and recognitions, what do you have?
Just a couple things. We've had a lot of phone calls regarding our field staff and kudos to the cleanliness of their work and their hospitality. So I want to give them kudos, shout out, especially in the heat.
And we had L's last day, last week, great turnout.
Yeah, we had a lot of contractors show up, a lot of vendors show up to celebrate their, her retirement.
Some former employees.
Yep, so we have some former employees. And I know a couple of you showed up to that, so I appreciate you coming.
Uh, vice committees and I just reported, we have none, right?
Nope.
Five, no, that's it. Okay. Approval of the minutes.
I move on agenda items 8A and B.
Sir.
Motion by Carol, second by Ed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda items, so.
I move on consent agenda items 9A, B, and C.
Sir.
Motion by Carol, second by Ed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
District engineer, for the meeting. Admin, agenda item, so approval of the Lee County Sheriff's Office.
Yeah, so just to kind of give you a little bit of background before, Lieutenant Vaughn?
Yes.
Lieutenant, oh, we've got to make sure I get that right. Lieutenant Vaughn shows up and did you a brief presentation. I am stuttering a lot today. I apologize. So the question that was posed by the board was, hey, we're paying $40,000 a year for these 16 license plate reader cameras throughout the district. Is there any value to these? Is there any cost savings? Is there any alternatives? What's the way that you-
What makes it worth $40,000?
Exactly. So as part of, Lieutenant Vaughn and I met maybe a week or two ago. I did learn that the- Actually have a follow-up meeting with the block representative tomorrow to see if we can get the price lower. And with that, I'll turn it over to Lieutenant Vaughn to kind of go over some of the statistics and the benefits to the sheriff's office for these license plate readers.
And just really quick, Justin, we've had these operational for how long?
I think you've had 10 since 2022, and you've had six since 2023.
Correct.
And they are at every ingress and egress point to the district, and we've got one over at Pelican.
With the section of what, Sintas, you know, it's Sintas?
Sentos.
There's one there.
Commerce links.
That's the six that we added, the three intersections.
West links and commerce?
Commonwealth commerce and corporate links.
Okay, I thought we were missing one.
And when we signed up for this, I thought it was free. Now, apparently, the installation was free. But it was told to us that we had to pay a monthly fee somehow. I missed that.
So-
I was shocked to see the $40,000 bill.
You guys sign- With the $2,500 per camera annual, my question that I'm going to be posing to the block representative is, are we paying for a turnkey, all access, everything that we don't necessarily need? Is there a basic package that we could, we could get? Those are some of the questions I'll be asking the block representative, but to see if we can get the $40,000 price down. Another option is reduce the number of cameras that we have.
Is this a Comcast fee?
No.
Who are we paying this? We paying a fee? Because we've got 29 cameras in our community, and we're paying like $2,000 per camera for those. And I thought that it was because of some licensing deal on the cameras. Is that what this is for?
I believe it's a license, and that's part of the questions I have for the block representative tomorrow. Because the contract wasn't clear exactly what we were getting for this $2,500.
But I, ours, I was told that it's only when you change the camera do you pay that fee.
Yeah.
If, like, we had a camera for three years, we don't pay that fee.
So let's have Vaughn do the presentation, and then we'll ask the local department, because that, yeah.
Absolutely. Well, welcome.
May.
Welcome. Thank you. Again, for those who don't know me, my name's Lieutenant Angelo Vaughn with the Lee County Sheriff's Office. And on behalf of Lee County Sheriff Carmine Marcinois and his administration, thank you for letting us come in here to your meeting and basically give you some of the highlights as to why it's important to have these cameras in your community. If you look at the screen up here, this is one year, this is just for Gateway and Gateway only, from August of 2024 to August of this year. Total hot list alerts, 3,700, 3,720, 3,000, oh, I'm sorry, 374,922 hot list alerts. What is that? Once I was able to read this, the total alerts by topic, if you go down the list, it will go through everything from invalid license to expired tags. And I will go to that page as well.
This is what's derived from?
This is from derived from one year.
From what, what is spotted through the camera?
What is spotted through the cameras. Again, just want to emphasize the-
We have 10 cameras, because we didn't add the six cameras. So this is only 10 cameras.
Yes, it's just what the cameras are picking up. Now, keep in mind, these cameras go into the Lee County Sheriff's Office Real-Time Intelligence Center. And so what these, by each topic, it talks about everything from sex offenders, how many the cameras picked up on, 8,761 as an example, stolen license plates, gang or suspected terrorists, stolen plates, warrants, wanted persons, anything, any vehicle that has come through Gateway that is, the Dallas cameras pick up on those stats, and those are not exaggerated. Again, that's just one year. This is what vehicles are being, this is what these cameras are picking up on these vehicles.
Question, that one that gets me is sex offender. That's a damn smart camera that knows a sex offender. I'm assuming that, it assumes that the sex offender is in the vehicle.
That is correct, sir. Or that-
That's a damn smart camera that knows a sex offender.
Well, it's based on the registered owner. If it, once that vehicle comes through and it reads that license plate and it comes back to, let's say, Jim Jones, all right?
So ties the two together.
It ties the two together. That's the purpose of that. And that's why we can't stress it enough, the importance of having these cameras in your communities, not just Gateway, any community.
So what, what does the Lee County Sheriff's Office do with this data?
What Sheriff's Office does-
Do you go arrest the sex offender just because they passed through the camera?
Well, if that sex offender has violated, let's say, his or her probation or whatever boundaries they have, then we will get a hit. We, the Sheriff's Office, will get a hit. Okay, this person is located at XYZ address. And if they're in violation, then it becomes a law enforcement matter.
So like an example, if they're parked in front of the school, where usually they are not allowed to be?
Correct.
So then dispatch will make a decision to send somebody over there and take care of the case, or actively?
Exactly. What happens, as, as the chairperson said, we will get the call, this person is located at, you know, Gateway Elementary, God forbid. Then we're, dispatch is going to have a deputy come over. If not, myself, because this is one of my community's ed patrol, we go over to Gateway Elementary, we make contact, we let the school know, okay, we're on our way. Where's this person at? And we make sure that body makes contact with them with this subject. So we make-
Lieutenant Vaughn, let me, let me have you take this up just one more level and more generality. So there are 374,922 alerts, and it's made up of all these different categories.
Yes, sir.
The adverse action that takes place as a result of these, someone monitoring these cameras and, let's say, in real time, there is an alert of, of a stolen vehicle plate. Once that is identified, there's an action that's, someone is dispatched to that vehicle. So each alert could have an adverse action that results in some type of activity, research or arrest or a ticket or something along those lines. Is that accurate?
They'd say, say, yes, that is pretty, that is very accurate. Yes, sir.
So these aren't just, these aren't just alerts. These are alerts that have a corresponding adverse action as a result of having these in place, which, realistically, goes directly towards the safety and well-being and quality of life within our community. Is that what you're saying?
That is exactly what I'm saying. Yes, sir.
Since, since all of these people are coming into the community here, they obviously could be coming into our interior communities, like Gateway Greens. Does my access control officer have access to this information?
We don't, again, this-
Because if you don't provide this information to me and to my access control, to me, it's not a benefit to me.
And hence, no.
Because if you have it, like, we have people that come in, we do speeding, we do all kinds of things. We, a lot of times, find that their driver's license are not accurate. We have to go back, whether it's their driver's license or their car license could be stolen. We don't know who to chase because we don't have any information, but you do have. If you're sharing that with us, I'm all, all in. If you're not sharing the information with us, I'm opposed.
It's per request. So any data that they have, we can request data that they don't have. So this is something that they have. So on your dashboard, so you can request this. If you have an issue, you want to take a look at a specific action. You just cannot tell them what to do, like, what action to take.
Well, I'm not saying that.
But that, that report is available. If you have the same contract that we have for the usage, you have visibility, of a general visibility of those items.
Yeah, if I have a car in my community, come through my gates, because I have cameras on some, everywhere. But we can't chase them down. We don't know who they are. Well, how, if we can come to you, because you've got them, because if they came into our community that came through one of your cameras, if we tell you, here's the car, here's the license, all's we need to have you tell us is who it is. Last I was told was, the only thing we can tell you is the county. That doesn't help me. I need to know the address of the person that's got that vehicle, then we, we're not going to go to you. We'll go after them. We'll either ban them from the community, or if there's legal action we can take, we'll do it. But we've got to have the data. And herefore, we've been having difficulty of telling, not providing that data.
So let me shorten, I think, so Ed, and he particularly has the same thing that we have on the block. So it's kind of different than what we're looking at here, right?
Yes.
So let's see, a car goes in, license plate 111111, okay? Their, their security guard, nothing to do with Lee County, goes in, makes contacts, asks for the driver's license, they don't have it. Can they now call the sheriff's office and say, you had a hit on your flock camera between 1:00 and 2:00 p.m.? I need to know all the tags that went in. They look at all the tags, they find the 1111. And then now, can you look for the registration information of that tag? Can you provide that to them? That's his question, am I right?
That's the question.
We could do that, because when you say chase, one thing we do not want is security officers chasing cars. That's where we come into play. Let us do the pursuing, just as a lack of a better term. But once we get, if, once your security officer makes contact with this person or persons, and they're not supposed to be here for whatever reason, that's when they notify law enforcement, because your security guards don't have arresting-
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Got a big problem. Our roads are private.
I understand, yes.
Our roads are private. And we're having this problem in our community with, what do you call it, vendors and with these e-bike and dirt bikes. Every time I turn around, and I've talked to Mark about this, we can't do anything, you can't do anything if you're not there to catch them. You can't be there to catch them.
But that's a new type of violation.
That's what I'm trying to say. We don't want you doing anything. We just want to have you tell us who it is. So we go after them. Our association can send them a finding notice. We have that authority.
Yes.
We're not asking you to put points on their card or on their license. We're going to give them a ticket for $100 for speeding, or whatever the issue is. But we need to know who the person is. We don't have that information. If we can get that of what Poppy has just said, I will afford, because it would be very beneficial.
But this is, I mean, this is a Gateway issue, right? So we don't want, that, that's, like, to me, it's a side note, like Gateway Greens, private property issue. I think maybe a better relationship with you, Lee County Sheriff's Office, and say, hey, look, we want you to be more aggressive on the items, because you're not going to have, you're not going to have issues with the top half of that, not the top bottom, hopefully. So that's something that maybe a partnership with you, Lee County Sheriff's Office Deputy, or even your detail person and saying, because the detail person, I don't think he has visibility of flocks. Only the main office does. So I think that's more a sit-down conversation with your detail, Lee County Sheriff's Office, Lieutenant Vaughn, yourself.
We tried that, and it, we tried that, and it, it doesn't work.
Mr. Tinkle, we just-
We just need access to the vehicle. If we know who the owner of the vehicle is, it's licensed, registered to, that's all we need. We don't need anything else.
Mr. Tinkle, we can, can you and I circle back to that, please?
Okay.
You and I. And you have my business card, correct?
Yeah.
Yes? Okay. Let's you and I come back to that. Just talk to Mr. Redd.
This would be very valuable for us.
Understood.
So go ahead, Doug.
So can we, can we do something really quick? And what you're saying is very valid, but I think we need to tailor this conversation into two terms. One, we need to land on the validity of the $40,000 that we spend, and all agree whether there's a cost benefit to that. I think that's why, that's why we asked Lieutenant Vaughn to come in. So we have $40,000 that we spend. We have to, as a board, determine whether that is valid. And there's two pieces to that. One, can we get cost reduction? And I think staff is working on that. But even on face value, looking at the stats, is $40,000, which is under, less than a few bucks?
$2.
$2 per resident. Do we agree that our resident would, residents would be comfortable paying that $2, $2, $3 based on the data and the adverse action, the results that occur for having those cameras in place? Now that I've seen the data and I've seen the categories, I'd love to see, you know, maybe as a follow-up, the arrest numbers or- the arrest numbers or, you know, more statistical, um, output.
To go back to the prior screens and to try and talk on where Doug is. Of the eight thousand, can you put that on the screen up here, of the eighty-seven hundred sex offenders? And I heard somebody say earlier that when he was at school, you have no idea where they landed. They just went by a tagline. Correct?
That's correct.
So you don't know if they're seven eleven. How many arrests were there?
Well, if they're not violating the, if they're not violating their probation-
How many arrests did we have?
That's, that's what I was trying to, out of, out of four, out of three hundred seventy-four thousand alerts, how many of those resulted in some type of action that-
Well, I don't wanna look at the three seventy-four because I really don't care about the invalid license, expired tags. You know, that's, when you get down to the rest, it's like a thousand in a year. Twelve thousand seven hundred and seventy-five comes to thirty-five a day. Were there any arrests?
Can I get, can you give me time to get that information?
Because the identification without mitigation, or again, uh, hard adverse action, that doesn't mean anything. If we just know who's in the neighborhood, that's fine. But if we're, if we're putting these cameras in place because there is uh, an action that occurs that makes our streets safer, our roads safer, or just enhances the quality of life, then that's something that is, that we can put a quantitative amount to. That is more than just, we know who's in the community, that's great, but how is it?
Three hundred and seventy-four thousand and say hello, no. So what is it for all Lee County? It's gonna be ridiculous. How do you respond to that, Bob? You're overwhelmed.
How many cameras do we have?
Sixteen.
Sixteen. Well, the, the, I can tell you right now, you're not gonna get anything out of those numbers. That two thousand is exactly what we're paying for our twenty-nine.
So go back to the other, to the other page, page five. So this is a breakdown per number, right? So I was, when I saw this, eight hundred and eighty thousand hits in the last thirty days, I didn't realize that's, and even there for us, you know, for the roads and the usage, I mean, that is a lot of-
Because they're missing through the court.
But it would only tie, that's right. If you only take one event like, let's say, seven eleven getting robbed and if these cameras-
To be considerable and worth it, yeah.
Help apprehend an individual, then that one event would be worth, you know, a couple bucks per resident, in my opinion.
And that's, and that's how I look at it. How, how do you say, you know, one arrest, domestic violence, and we save the person? It's one person. If, if you have one, one is good enough.
Just to add, just to add back, I don't know if you saw a case in Kyler County about a year, year and a half ago, where there was an attempted shooting, a man and woman causing accidents and both almost died. And Kyler County, yes, so was able to use a number of cameras for private businesses, these kind of cameras, and traffic light cameras to track the movement. And they actually did a time mark. It was, I don't know if you heard about that one.
I did hear about that one, sir. The purpose of these cameras-
And they follow their tags, they follow their tags.
With, with these stats, at the end of the day, what these cameras do for the communities, it monitors their traffic volume, which you can see, that allows Gateway Community Development District to come in to make, as you say, informed decisions, future interest, infrastructure planning, road maintenance and safety plans. Safety plans such as evacuation for hurricanes. And we're in the thick of hurricane season, as everybody knows. That's why we will, we, hopefully you will keep these cameras here. It's just, it helps you. You win in the long run.
If we're gonna sell these, I can tell you right now, not, not to disagree with what you're saying, but
Understood.
The only thing you're gonna give the Joe on our street to agree to is security. This offers security.
Yeah, I agree. And then the other, the other piece that I was, you know, to Ed's point, I think there is two things we're looking at here. One, which directly, directly impacts Gateway, uh, residents as a whole, is the impact to the Gateway resident. I think there is an additional benefit, which is to some of our, our communities like Gateway Greens or where I live in Stony Brook, where there's, um, where there's also an inherent benefit of having them just at the entrances. We need better partnership and understanding on how, at the community level,
Yes, sir.
how having these cameras and the partnership with, with the county can help the communities mitigate issues like the ones that Ed had. Now, I do believe that's probably a different meeting for us. It's probably bringing you back for maybe a town hall with, and even maybe having Lieutenant Vaughn come to our president's council to have, to talk specifically about that.
People have a hit and they'll, because they can pass by Griffin, but they don't know where they're going, but they pass by Griffin and now they hit simple, uh, time ward.
But if we can leverage the data to help communities like Ed's or everyone's communities uh, with some of their issues with obtaining some data and information, now that is a benefit that drills down to the community level, which you can sell that all day long. And the, and then the additional benefit is from the greater Gateway.
Are we suggesting that the communities are safer since twenty twenty-two than before? Because we spent a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, far as I'm concerned, we may as well just throw it out.
The data that I would hope that Lieutenant Vaughn would be able to provide is, what would be documented is-
This means nothing. We don't know where the people went. They just went by a tag.
Well, that's, that's why the follow-up is, what, what is the biplotic of these cameras? How many arrests?
How many?
Whether it's directly related to an event that happened within the community or if there was an arrest that was made as a result of being able to track through our community, even though the altercation or, or the violation might have happened outside of our Gateway walls. That's what we, that's the one piece that we're-
Lieutenant Vaughn, are these cameras, our cameras report to a big video screen in our office? Do these report to a place where the camera sees, is hot, is live?
Yes, that goes back to the real-time intelligence-
So there's a place where they're live?
Is the real-time intelligence center being real-time.
And they're being monitored.
Okay, you're sure. I have visit. It's, it's-
How many cameras are there?
We're paying for it on our taxes, let me tell you.
How many cameras are in there, Claudia? How many, how many cameras are in there?
That's my question. Uh, Lee County Sheriff's Office, so what is the photomonet cameras? I, I do have that data.
So you can turn a camera on and off. You don't, you're not, you don't have a person sitting there looking at a thousand cameras all over Lee County?
What we have, what we have, and again, if you would be interested to tour the real-time intelligence center, Ms. Walsh will tell you, it's, it's stated, we keep, it's not Big Brother or anything like that. We're not violating anybody's rights, but it monitors every, pretty much every county or every area in the county. It's, it's a very valuable tool for us. But to answer your question, Bob, can I get back with you on it? As the exact number of cameras we have in Arctic Real-Time Temporal District, can I get back with you on that?
Someone's getting analysis for ours to do that.
Well, you're not, you're not looking at a thousand cameras at once. What's happening is you're getting alert feeds. And those alert feeds have-
But are they reacting to it? If someone being dispatched to come over here?
Not all the time.
Any other time?
Yes.
Once a day? Twice a day?
I don't know. It depends on what, what are they looking for.
There's thirty-five, if my math is right, there's thirty-five incidents per day. How many, how many come over? I'm gonna do thirty-five. And I, and I'm not talking about the top four.
So, so instead of like pulling numbers out, let Vaughn get back towards that number, but it's all, it's very similar to the, the fire department. It's, if, if they have enough officers, I'll just go like this, and you can tell me if I'm wrong. If they have enough officers and there's nothing going on in Lee County and suddenly they have those hits on those three areas that we don't care so much, they may send somebody over. But maybe there's a lot of thing going on with Lee County, there are officers dispatched everywhere else. They don't have the ability to send somebody for a, a car tag that's expired. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So they're vetting on that. So I think, can I write?
No, no, you're right about that, Ms. Walsh. I get where you're coming from. Bob, I also hear, that's why I'm saying, let me, and do you have my contact information, sir? Or do you have a business card?
I appreciate it.
Okay, I can, I can give you a card, uh, in a few minutes when I'm finished. I'm very cheap.
Love it.
That's a lot of money.
Okay, so, so the question I had was, is it worth the district to pay forty thousand dollars a year in perpetuity for value?
Are we getting that?
Are we getting value? And so that answer is, remains, it, it's unanswered at this point. We don't have a direct correlation. We're gonna ask for Lieutenant Vaughn to either, in writing, provide that as a follow-up for the next meeting, et cetera. So the two actions that I have looked at is, is there any entertainment by the board to reduce the number of cameras? Let's, let's start with that.
I just, we're gonna say locations. I don't see anything in there that I would change. None of it.
So-
I do have, okay, so then either we reduce the location, we eliminate completely, or we keep it as is. Those are the three options.
Well, no, I'm sorry. I think there's a third option. This is a very valuable tool for your office. I understand that. But why am I paying the forty thousand? You guys should pay the forty thousand.
Absolutely.
You're getting the alerts. You're the ones that respond if it's something that's a safety issue.
So Carol, that-
Why am I, as a member of this board, paying forty thousand a year when this is your tool to handle your responsibility? We can't go out and make any arrests or do anything about it. So honestly, I think there's a third option is that is that we don't pay the forty thousand at all.
Okay. My question to you, and I don't think you know this, and then I wanted to follow up with an email this morning because I did make some calls. I wanted to know what is the actual budget for Lee County Sheriff's Office for those cameras? What do they stand on the budgets and generally the location they are installed? Because given that we, as Gateway Service, cover all the entrances, you guys are not spending any money here. However, like to Carol's point, we're paying for it. So maybe we would be, I, I guess I would like to see the budget that you have set aside for those cameras. How much of the budget are you losing in the locations? Because if they're going just, you know, Palm Beach Boulevard and Lehigh Acres and they're not here, then if you made that decision, then it's because there's no need. So if you made that decision, then we're gonna file that decision. There is no need. If you're gonna tell me the decision, there is no need because we already put some up, then I think we can work halfway and say, look, you pick up some of the cameras. We, we have some of the cameras. So I think there's wiggle room for us to play within this. But without having those numbers, I can't sit and argue with you about it.
So that a couple things. So one of the other, as part of the conversation I was having with the Sheriff's Office in Motorola was, um, what, was there an opportunity, A, to, to turn over the, the cost burden over to the sheriff? There's not an appetite for that, at least from, from the captain that I spoke with. Uh, because obviously they don't have in their budget right now, that maybe that's something they could consider moving forward. But the second part of that was, they switched, they've switched over to Motorola. So I asked, I said, well, could the district, and this was, this was a question, which I'm still, still waiting on the answer, we're gonna follow up, is what if the district wrote a check as a one-time cost, turned over the system to the sheriff, and they maintained it from there on out? That was one of the questions that, and, and, I mean, as part of an MOU or some, some, something like that. But my goal from here and from the get-go was to reduce the cost burden to our taxpayers and somehow maintain the existing level of service if possible. So like I said, I have follow-up conversation with Flock. I'm hoping to be able to bring something back to you guys at the next meeting. The cost for Motorola was higher. There is always the option to procure at a very expensive cost, procure the cameras and then, like I said, turn them over to the sheriff. Uh, that was a couple hundred thousand dollars at all sixteen locations. But, um, again, the underlying question was, is there a way to save money or eliminate or reduce? And that's, we still, we don't necessarily have an answer to that, but we're, we're working in that direction.
Or how many of these cameras does Lee County FCSO have all over? Is everybody, are all of these cameras being paid for by somebody like us throughout the whole county? Can none of them are be, are being budgeted by the county itself?
Well, once again, can I get back with you? And can we circle back that along with your request as far as the arrests that are made? If we can just circle back to that, because I don't have that information.
I can tell you right now, if my access control has access to this information, I'm all for it. Because it means a lot to us. We spend a lot of time chasing a goose and we can't get the data. This would give us the data immediately.
So maybe, I know it's, we're short on time because you have two weeks to get there, but I would be willing to meet with you at the station. And I guess Ed would like to meet and see the, see the obligations. Okay. So, so then we'll have Bob and Carol. Would you like to?
Sure.
Okay, so then we can just partner separately, yes.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
I'm busy on it all, so I'm the same time.
Claudia, I'll share all of your emails with Lieutenant Vaughn, your district emails, and that way you can reach out.
Okay.
Seven o'clock, seven o'clock, you have to come, come, come.
Not seven, for you.
So we, so they can visit the facility. I don't need to visit the facility. I would like to have a sit-down talk more to the number side.
Yes, ma'am.
So budgeting and that kind of stuff. Then maybe you and I will just go, like later tomorrow, I'll call you.
Where's it located?
It's located in the Sheriff's Office headquarters. If you're going on Six Mile Cypress, going towards forty-one, it's on the north side of Six Mile, just, just before you get to US forty-one.
Before Pop's call.
Exactly. Thank you.
All right. So any other questions for Lieutenant Vaughn? Because I think I gave it to him, so he can give some more. All right, thank you.
Can I pass off my business card over here, please? Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for the invite.
Thank you.
There you go, kind sir.
Thank you very much.
And I think you have my-
You are in my contact list.
Yes, there you go. And I know who you are, ma'am. You should have, your husband should have my information.
He does.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Be in touch.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so we'll go ahead and do eleven B.
Um, so I'll kind of just give a little background history. So if you recall, maybe a year or two ago, Daniels Parkway Apartments, um, the, I call it the boot over there that's undeveloped on Daniels, they had come in and asked about tying into irrigation system and because it was cost prohibitive, there was alternative measures to, you know, for us to tie into our system and be a customer. Um, and then also, part of that conversation was, um, the design of their system, was the design of their system and our needs, et cetera. So a year later, we have Tony and Tech Tech and staff and the developer have spent many, many moons together talking about, um, how to come to some type of compromise. So what we have in front of you are two agreements. One is a temporary interim well agreement, and then the second is a cost-sharing upsized agreement. This is not final approval of the development itself, but the, the developer needs these agreements at least-
Potentially final form.
Substantially, thank you, Tony.
To finalize their civil plans and site plans to come back.
What are they upsizing that's, in that location that's beneficial to us?
Their mains. They were, they had only proposed like a ten-inch main and our-
Are you talking about irrigation?
Ponds.
Oh, okay. Because this, we're, we're, we've got different subjects on here. This here is predominantly for the irrigation wells.
And wells are solely irrigation.
But what you're saying is, is that they are going to do some internal work that would allow us to connect point A to point C with a stronger system.
That will, that will enhance-
That's a separate issue.
Yeah, that's why it was two separate agreements.
Okay, so, but let's go back to the deal. What is IQ? Where did that ever come from?
Irrigation quality.
Where'd that come from?
I put that in because I've seen it in other green, Kyler County uses that and there was also irrigation quality.
The thing they're doing is, is that they have, based on what they say, I don't agree with it, but based on what they say is they cannot get access to our irrigation system. We'll drop that. So instead, they wanna put in wells. They're putting in four wells. Are those wells going to be connected to a tank? What's, and where's the water go that comes out of these wells? Like ours goes into a tank and then is repumped into the system. How are they doing it?
Well, Brennan, do you wanna come speak to it?
Yeah, part of the, they only have, where they apply for an obtained water use permit, we did not know that they have one in place. And the site plan shows the proposed locations for the wells, but as far as any other facilities, that's a good question.
Yeah, I couldn't tell from the picture. Are you pumping into a tank or are you pumping into a lake? Are you just going straight from the wells to the irrigation system?
We could do the lakes or we could do just groundwater. Um, I don't know if that's been finalized yet. We'd probably have to go back to South Florida Water Maintenance District.
So if your irrigation system in one of your common areas calls for water, the pump comes, one of the wells, I figure activates?
It's gonna be metered and, uh, Gateway will be-
And what I was gonna say, it seems like to me it's gotta go through either a storage tank or into a-
There are four ponds in the lake and I don't know specifically if one was gonna be-
Because I couldn't tell that from the information I saw.
Yeah.
Brennan, just introduce yourself, please, for the record.
Uh, Brennan McIlary with Atwell, engineer, civil engineer.
Okay, well, that was the thing I was trying to figure out, is it's totally internal, you're monitoring the water and we're getting paid or compensated back for the water that they use, but they incur all the capital costs to build this infrastructure?
And maintenance costs, they do all that. We, we, the district has access to verified meter readings and also the, you know, assisted functioning of the meters and everything else.
Because at this point in time, this system, it looks like, I don't see any advantage, advantage to us to have a piece or stake in this. What's it gonna do for us? We've got a system.
So the-
It's not going to be interconnected to our systems.
That's correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct. It's a standalone internal only for the project.
So two, two advantages to what they're proposing that are, that are advantages to the district is right now our supply and demand and a deficit to the demand. So we're getting all of the sewage from their development without having any demand on our system, on our irrigation system. So that's one benefit. The second benefit is- The second benefit is...
Water in, no water out.
Yes.
Okay.
The second benefit is we're gonna be compensated by the amount of water that they're pulling based on our fee schedule, because that is in lieu of tying into our system.
I got it.
Yeah, and part of that, I think, they have to resubmit, there's an open, the last to middle was earlier this year. I think last comments for staff was March of this year. And a lot of, there's a lot of technical aspects to those comments. But the biggest item was trying to wrap up and finalize these agreements. And they had to come back and resubmit to the board to adjust touch tech issues, buy issues, staff issues, and provide the detail that you just brought up today, civil plan, site plan, the whole nine yards. That's correct?
Correct.
So they're seeking the districts...
Was there a water... If you're taking and bringing this water out of the mid Hawthorne, what are we, two, three hundred feet? What the depth is?
Oh, the depth, uh, a hundred fifty or to two hundred, I thought I saw on the...
So, but can you bring that water out? I didn't read all that on the permit, that's boring. Can you bring, my question is, can you bring that water out and put it into one of our ponds? And is there a water quality issue of sodium or those type of things?
I don't have the answer to that, but I could get back to you.
The last thing we need is to have that kind of stuff in our pond system.
I agree.
We wouldn't take that pond as part of it, so that would be their responsibility.
Yeah, but it's connected into our system. So we're gonna have the consequences of whatever goes in that pond.
Oh, they haven't constructed it yet, so it doesn't have to be tied, it doesn't have to be tied into our system.
Where's the water gonna go?
So here's the flowers.
It's part of the waterway system, the gateway, isn't it?
They haven't constructed the four ponds that they're proposing.
Okay.
Well, I think, and when they...
I guess they're already connected.
That's a good point, they do the resubmit. And Touch Tech, at least he was listening to review the plans that specifically may have conditions of approval.
Conditions would be, we would specify water quality tests.
If this were to give us our water quality system, network.
That would be, that would have to be requirement.
Carol has a...
Yeah, I would approve both of these agreements.
And substantially final form.
In what?
Substantially final form.
Right, that's what I said.
And subject to the ultimate approval of the overall project.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I heard you say that.
Thank you.
I'll sign.
So I have a second, first, a motion by Carol, second by Doug, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, bro.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lance.
But Ed, those are good points, and I will make sure Touch Tech is also aware of those when they review the schedules.
Yeah, because when you have an irrigation system, you gotta have either like a pneumatic tank or something to provide the pressure for the water to go to. To have a pump come on, I mean, lots of luck that your pump value is equal to the value of the water that's going out. I mean, you just don't do that. There's gotta be a control system.
Can you just make sure that we have, get Touch Tech's input on the requirement for the quality, the quality test? The frequency of that.
Good point, yes. Make sure they do that as part of the review.
So this next item is a policy discussion. And this really has come to light as we have been doing our pond maintenance inspections, month-pond maintenance inspections, identifying point repairs that are needed and evaluating why those are caused. Um, and so Paul and Stephanie, I have to give them who does, because they're the ones who put this together, and we had some internal conversations, had some conversations with Tony, is taking a page out of Pelican's book, who had the bright mind to think forward in downspout drainage and rear yard drainage. We have identified a handful of issues throughout the district where there's a direct correlation where downspouts or lack of downspouts into the pond has caused major erosion on our pond banks. And so, um, we wanted to bring this conversation in front of you. There's another CED that Tony identified in Collier County that has identified a policy, almost like a partnership, really, I wanna call it, instead of a policy.
They have a master association. Yeah, because they have a master homeowners association, all the quarry, kind of like Park and Reserve.
So part of this is working with property owners and implementing gutter downspout drainage that ties into a bubbler exactly like Pelican did to help prevent these erosions to our ponds.
Okay. This came up several years ago. And I thought we ran into the same quarter with the way to get out. I don't mind the quarry deal, as long as you're going with the shared cost option. The problem is, I looked at my HOA rules and covenants and all that, and unless, Tony, you can come up with something, I don't see how we can mandate an owner, two possibilities. An owner that's got gutters, that has downspouts. How you can mandate him to go from point A to point B, which might have to go sixty feet to get to the LMA to a bubble up or a box. That's issue one. Issue two, and the more complicated one, is he ain't got no nerves.
And that's...
How you gonna do that? Because I've had my people say, don't even try to go down this road with somebody.
So I'll have Carol, you wanna say something, all right?
Yeah, actually, I want to ask Bob. How, how did we do this in Pelican?
We, the pond group, made the determination that this was beneficial to our ponds. So then we approached, then we got to the point where P-PAC voted to fund, fund the installation of the drainage, not the outspouts. The next step was, we went to every association and said...
And Motor Association.
Every, enjoy, every community, and said, we have a plan that we're gonna put these, bury the downspouts and run it to the pond. If we do that, will you pay the NAK in the future? And they said, yes.
So...
When we went to the individual homeowners and said...
So P-PAC...
P-PAC funded it.
Funded it.
Totally funded.
The initial hook-in.
All of it.
Funded it.
All of it, except for installation of downspouts. And in the entire community, we only, I'm sorry, we only had one person refuse to put it in.
Somebody's gonna grant an easement, somebody.
Okay, so then, and then, and then how did you get the maintenance transferred then? If we put them in, we don't have to maintain them?
The individual HOAs, blow them out, pump them out, do whatever, once a year. Is it a hundred percent being done? I don't know, but most of them aren't.
Okay, so that's how the process is working right now?
Yes.
Okay.
And in the deference...
Chelsea, are you saying then that if we adopt this policy, that when we come to a future pond in Gateway? Because it sounds like we don't have to do this in Pelican. This would just be in Gateway. So, I don't know, pick a time, eighty-five, I don't know, pick a number. And let's say that's on our list to do next year. The cost of that project is going to be increased by the amount that it's going to take to put these bubblers in?
Depends.
The actual construction of the pond.
Two thousand, we spent two thousand dollars on them.
It depends on which one of these options you're going to use.
On each connection. Give it to the home they have, yeah.
Per home. We spent two thousand dollars per home.
Before we even go to that, I do have some...
So it depends how many homes around the pond.
That are on the pond.
This was more about a...
Not only how many homes, how many connections. Because you could have a downspout, you could have one home, up to three downspouts coming into the pond, so that'll be a six thousand dollars for that particular home.
No, 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 no. The, on individual home, you have one that sits between the two homes. We only had to put it in one line, per home.
Yeah, but what do you have?
Okay, but I have, I have homes in my community that...
I've got three.
Mainly the two-story homes, because they're smaller, so they can hold that much water. They will have one downspout to the left, the house, one to the right, so you would have, you would have connected two neighbors. But they have some that, in the middle of the two, where they have a lanai, they have a third one.
Yeah, and all of it. No matter how many homes were between two homes, how many downspouts. All of it connected, and we sized appropriately. Think of it in terms, you have to put one per every home. So you have one on the right side of the home, but there's one on the left side, but that's actually the next home.
You do it together, eighty-two, eighty-three, we did the same thing.
Yeah, you only put in one per home, and it was roughly two thousand bucks on that.
Okay, so my question's for Paul, looking at, I wanna go back to the pictures, hold on, one second. Go back to the pictures that we have there. Okay. Are the damages caused exactly why? Is it because the pipe, it doesn't extend all the way to the lake? And then it extends maybe three or four feet prior to the lake, and that's where erosion starts?
Or it swells.
So, good afternoon for the supervisor, for the record, Paul Flores, of Works Director. Yes, this, the photos in front of you is Lake Fifty-Six, Village of Stony Brook. The drainage, the gutter pipe ends right at the building, next to the building, which, very hard to see, but that right corner photo there, it ends there, and there's several feet from that gutter where it ends to the edge of the pond. But from that gutter, you can see the damage that is causing, which is the photo on your left.
It's like swells.
Yes, yes, exactly.
Exactly, and that's what Gateway was made. It says right even on our covenants, that you'll put in a swale, that they'll either, the front half goes to the street, the back half goes to the lake. That is where we got a problem. This started forty years ago with Westinghouse Gateways, not knowing what the hell they were doing. But it was cheap.
Well, they do.
And now we're living with it.
So I will say this, given, I'm going to go by data, on eighty-three, we had, we spent the money, we installed all of those in every single property. Eighty-six homes, just within a pond, three people connected. So, so if they have gutters, they're more willing, but they still gonna have a cost. But if you are spending five thousand dollars in gutters around your home, because that's the cost that you're gonna give it to each homeowner. So you think they're upset about an increase of a hundred and fifty dollars a year on their taxes? Wait until you tell them that they now have to put five thousand dollars in gutters, and then we're gonna bill them on their taxes for the other two thousand or so that's gonna cost to the end. And it is something that, I know Tony reminded me, but we talked about this. We couldn't not enforce them to do it. So if they chose not to do it, and they created damages, we couldn't go after it. Because I think that was a conversation with Pelican. There was more Armstrong into, if you don't do it, and if there's damages to it...
We told them that, knowing we couldn't enforce it.
Exactly, so we're not being very clear here when Carol asked that question. The question was, they were told, the residents were told by Pelican that if you don't do it, and if there's damages, you're going to be responsible for it. So they were afraid, and they did it.
That was correct.
But we cannot, we cannot do that. So I wanna be...
The point in the policy that we're trying to bring in front of you is to give residents a carrot, right? To, hey, Paul, they reached out to the Village of Stony Brook with Pam and said, your downspouts have caused damage. Working with them and telling them that it's apparent that this issue was caused by your downspouts. You need to address this, you damaged our property. But part of the carrot is, hey, we'll, because we don't want them to touch our pond bank, is if we do the bubbler to the pond, out of case-by-case scenario, and maybe it's something we evaluate with, like the whole pond thing, I didn't, I mean, I didn't even go that far. But this was a, hey, we've identified these erosion issues. We are not compliant with our pond, with our pond standards and our permit, enticing property owners by saying, hey, we're gonna invest and help with this drainage issue. If you help, then you do your part. That was, that was the point.
But that is a huge cost, I remember the cost of my, there was a huge cost to put in those amounts and not having, it was letting a fifty-fifty return that they were doing. The cost benefit.
When they went by White House, that was one of the first ponds, they were putting in the boxes at the corner of every lot. And that gave you the opportunity, there was two connections coming into the box. So your neighbor could come in, you could come in, then you go to the other side, and you could come in with a second deal, and your neighbor could come in. That's how I did it. So I just connected from my two drains and went right straight down to the box. A lot of people just said, I'm not doing it. I'm not spending the money.
But the concern that we have is, look, we need to get compliant with our D.O., or permit, with this erosion. We're gonna spend the money to fix the problem. But if we don't permanently fix the issue, we're gonna keep spending money.
Absolutely, that's what we do.
So that was, and taking Pelican's concept was, could we implement a policy and put some dollars aside and say, hey, we have this amount of budget every year to work with property owners, as long as there's easements, as long as there's everything else?
Chelsea, what you're gonna get into is gonna get into, he said, she said like this. I went out and I spent the two thousand dollars to hook them line up. My neighbor's causing a problem, and you wanna come up with a system that's gonna borrow money that I'm gonna pay for again. You make them do it.
Well, I'll remind the board that the board did change line, the Permit Criteria Act, to provide for this. So for our neighborhood of Prado and Vesoya, the builder had to put it in.
But that's half, we're trying to, it's all, we're all built up, with the exception of, so it's... So what is the number, can you tell me a number of point repairs that you think needs to be done caused specifically by this?
I would say majority of, majority of what we're dealing with or that we've dealt with have to do with gutter, gutter system, rooftop.
I need a number, like, you have thirty, because if you come in and you say that ninety-nine percent of the point repairs are caused by this, but then that number is seven homes, then it's not worth it for us. Now, if you come to us and you say sixty percent for three thousand homes, then it's worth it for us. I just have a hard time creating a policy that is not enforceable when the people don't have gutters. And you, again, you, they're having a heart attack with the increase of the taxes on the assessments for a hundred dollars. Now you're gonna force them to put five thousand dollars worth of gutters, it's just not gonna happen.
And if I could just clarify, I do apologize. It's not our intent to enforce or force anyone to install gutters, but if you have a gutter, a down, and it's coming down, and it's not connected to a downspout or bubbler, that's where we're seeing these, you know, these issues. So it is the gutters that are causing the issue, not so much necessarily the rooftop with down gutters.
So we're talking about twenty feet, right, so LME is twenty feet. So you're telling me that is, the water is coming with so much velocity prior to the ninety-feet LME that is causing this? Because if it is within the LME, then we have a right to stand on it, because we can say, you encroached on a LME, and you brought it up to here. So you have two choices, they remove it out of the LME, which is gonna give you twenty feet for the water to be dispersed properly, or you have an option to bring it all the way to the pond.
In other words, they fix the swale.
Exactly.
They fix the swale, which is on their property. Now, that is an issue. And I'm telling you, because I've seen it on all around Gateway. The people that don't have gutters, and the way Gateway was set up, was it was set up to go to swells. And it would take half the yard goes to the street, half the yard goes to the lake. That's the way all of Gateway was set up. A lot of those swells have filled up over the years, and there's been no maintenance. And the ones that are maintained, they get down there, and if they don't have them taken to where the water is distributed, they cause the running that you're talking about. It's a nightmare.
If you look at the photo that's in front of us, on the left.
That's exactly what it looks like.
On the left. Whether there's a downspout or not, the water goes between the two homes and goes to the pond. What we're looking at is the effect of that, because the water permeates under the sand and the sand, and that's what causes the washout. The soil below the grass gets washed, and that's what creates the...
Yeah, we've got a lot of these, there's a polar system.
Prevents that.
So a couple things, and again, I am just a bit bawling here, I'm not saying that this is, you know, even viable. It sounds like what we have spent significant amount of money is to, is to, through our lakebank restoration project, is to bring, for lack of a better term, to bring our ponds up to code and to, let's call it par. If we've spent that money, then what should happen, once that occurs, is there should be some type of quantifiable time period to which we would have to do it again. Maybe some mains, whatever. Probably running into is, we put forth this effort, and there are things outside of our immediate control, like, you know, maybe improper swell maintenance or downspouts or whatever. One thing we could think about is, once we complete this project and we determine that a pond is at a certain standard, and then we will do maintenance repairs within certain criteria. If there is erosion or if there is any type of damage that happened as a result, if those homes surrounding contribute to that, then it could be a special assessment to those homes that contribute, as opposed to making everyone...
I totally agree with that, but I think, told me, said I couldn't do that.
What?
No, it's a specially benefit from it, that's why the test is...
And the difference is, the difference is, the way we've been...
Because it's an integrated, connected stormwater management.
But my point is, the way we've gone about this is, everyone in Gateway contributes to the lakebank restoration project in order for us to get all of the ponds to a certain...
Whether you live here or not.
Whether you live here or not. But if we complete that, and we have done our due diligence and brought up to a certain standard, if there is deterioration or if there are adverse, you know, things that happen that accelerate or cause... that are, that accelerate or cause continued erosion, or those type of things, that should almost fall outside of everyone in Gateway having to pay for repeat repairs, when there is, you know, some type of mitigation that would come into play. So I'm, I'm not saying that we're responsible.
There's a responsibility.
But once we, once we say we're paying all to hit a certain standard, if that standard, if there is a repair or something that's happened because of, lack, lack, or lack of, of, of maintenance, then I think our, our path is to special assess, or to, to pass that, that additional cost, which would be outside of the standard schedule, to, to the homeowner that, you know, that incurs. And it is more complicated than that.
I recognize this as touchy, I really do.
Yeah, let me ask you, how many are those recurrent, I would go on, to you?
You know, it's, at this point, I cannot answer that, given the fact that I've only been here for a few months. But what I've noticed is that rooftop drainage systems are the biggest cause for washouts. And we're trying to figure out, or at least I'm trying to figure out, how to protect, protect the investment that the community is making on the Lake Bank Restoration Projects.
Well, here's a good example too, let me, just one quick thing. One example is, there are a number of homes that have had pools installed. As a result of that, the...
Overflow?
The overflow...
Causes a washout.
Causes a washout.
That is very true.
And because there wasn't a, you know, you know, I don't believe there was a...
Effort to drain.
An effort, well, or even to check, to make sure that the, the erosion, or the, what's the word I'm looking for?
The runoff.
The runoff, that is at what it should have been, because anytime you dig out, they're not taking that dirt away, they're just rolling it back, or, or regrading it, which changes the, the control elevation, which creates issues. I mean, I see it, you know, I, I have that problem at my house.
You bring up a very good point, yes, pools and rooftops are the biggest cause for washouts.
So, so again, this would cure the rooftops, but wouldn't cure, usually pools are right in the center of the property, so you wouldn't, you wouldn't, you wouldn't take care of that issue.
But they have that responsibility right now.
Well, they have the responsibility of, if they cause any damage.
Yeah, if the pool drainage is causing a washout behind you, I believe we have the right to win, tell the owner to fix it.
They don't have to fix it. We, we, if they, if they tell us, if they tell us, it is our responsibility, the permit, we are responsible for maintaining the ponds to those standards. So yes, we can come to you and ask them and tell you to do it, but if you don't pay, we have no recourse of going after you, right, Tony?
Well, a couple of things, Tony, I'll back up a bit here. The core, if you look at the core, the key difference on the core is, that they have an association with standards for drainage, and the master association. And throughout this agreement, you'll see reference to the standards and the rules, and the association will do this, the association will do that, on behalf for the district.
It's very different than what we...
Very different, Pelican Reserve may be comparable, depending on the coverage. In fact, to the question, how did Pelican Reserve do it back then? One of the big questions I had at the time was, does the district have the necessary easements in those open areas for the expenditure of public funds to install those pipes? On private land? Right, after looking at the two sets of covenants for Pelican Reserve, there's language in there, that, that, that all the condominium association documents, and all the homeowners association documents, are all subject to this master covenants, provides an easement over all the basically the open areas in favor of the district. So that gave the district the ability, I think they wanted to pay for the installation of those pipes going to the bubble locks in the district's ponds away. When you come to Gateway, to Ed's point also, the South Florida Water Management District Permit from forty years ago, if you look at the drainage flows, it's just a bunch of little arrows. It doesn't always indicate you gotta have a structure of their overland to convey the water. And so that's part of the problem. But to the point, if a person builds a pool, or puts additional fill in their yard, which increases the flow of water off the land, other than what was originally designed, I think the district should send them a letter saying, listen, you are, you are, trust, having continued trespassing water onto the district ponds from water management systems not really ever contemplated, and it's, and you don't have any structures or mechanism to have a point, to structure a bubble up.
I'd like to see, you know, inventory of all of our ponds.
Without issues.
And how many we really have, because...
I don't think it's that much, and so this is what I was gonna just correct you on this. It is not necessarily an investment on the projects. The reason why I say is, because on the new projects, when we're doing the ponds, if they have downspouts that's going up, you're already connecting it, so there's no question there. This is specifically for point repairs and areas that we are not doing the Lake Bank Restoration. So that's my question, there are one-offs, and are we having pushback? Are we having conversations with the homeowner and saying, hey, John, we are here, we're gonna work on this, this is what's causing, are they giving us pushback? Because that's a one-off, and that's a conversation with it. And I don't think that's happening. And outside, I know you're not been here for a while, but I, I work really close with Al, and we share a lot of things. I do not recall, and you can provide that, that we had this issue with point repairs that were caused and repaired multiple times, and I'll go, every two years, because that's, to me, you don't have to repair every two years. I don't recall any. I don't recall any, because either there was a conversation and education with the homeowner, because they didn't want that there, and say, look, we're gonna come and fix it, and this is caused by this, either you was, because I remember a lot of the conversations were, you just need to extend the pipe four more feet, no big deal, they didn't have to do the whole thing. So I, I just, I have a hard time spending the money ahead of time on Lake Bank projects for massive adding on of those bubblers, because again, they don't have gutters, and they don't have connections, so it's that. And unless you come and you're telling me, look, we're doing point repairs, and within one year, within two years, I'm back at the same location doing point repairs, then it's okay. But I don't think you're gonna be able to provide me with that, is that make sense?
Yes, yes and no, because my understanding, and historically, the district was taking the approach of installing drain boxes, and asking for the homeowner to voluntarily connect, but that program did not survive very much longer, and I think it was discontinued about three years ago. So I think there was, there was an attempt to try to get...
That's exactly right, because there was no method of compliance.
Right, so, what, what, what I'm seeking, or what we're seeking today, is maybe some guidance as to, how do we get compliance? Do we need a rule? Initially, we were going to present a policy, but Tony kind of corrected us, and told us, no, you gotta, you know, take a timeout. You need a rule before you start establishing any sort of policy. So that's why we're here before the, on the Board of Supervisors, just to get some direction.
So maybe the direction that I really need before anything is from Tony, to see, what can we really do? Can we do anything, can we hold them, their feet to the fire with a reasonable, you know, cost to them? Because again, I would be totally opposed of forcing them to spend that money.
And again, there's probably, there's not a problem, there's a difference between Pelican Reserve and Gateway.
Yeah, I'm talking about Gateway, I think, I think Pelican Reserve has an understanding, and my tech, and their education over their needs are totally different, they're, they're ahead of us.
Right, and they have a set of covenants.
They are very ahead of us, and, and, and I'm just...
We sold, we sold.
I'm just thinking about, what can we do? Can we fix the item, and then issue them a fine for not doing it?
No fines.
That's what I remember the conversation.
Could you put it in and put a lien on the bro?
I'm asking a conversation that I asked five years ago.
One thing is, in, in one, a lot of redevelopments occurring, we talked about that too. We have the Permit Criteria Act initially geared for development, and then a few years back, if people realized, hey, redevelopment, the whole idea about when somebody comes along to redevelop, they need to start doing things, and/or like building new structures, like aerators and all those, that was never really in the old rules.
Or putting a pond.
Or putting a pond in. So now we have redevelopment, or if someone, the point about someone putting a pool in the patio, or some additional imperious area in their yard, that might be a point eventually where they need to get the district's approval of that, because that alters the drainage pattern and flow of water into the district's ponds, then the district, they have the opportunity to have, and a rule requires them to come to the district, and provide a set of plans, and show how they're going to have discharge and outfall in an appropriate manner. So that we can do on a prospective basis. But the problem is, that requires the county building departments, the community development departments coordination, and they're not very good at that with the district.
We actually, we actually had some of the four-story buildings that didn't have downspouts when we started the project, so they weren't included. And now they've all put in downspouts, and then they've all got their drains. I mean, we even asked them to do them, they just saw the benefits and did it. I, I don't know that the residents are gonna be as negative as some of us think they are, and I don't know all you people, but they look, but it's been, and, and, you know, just very encouraging that the people themselves see the benefits. And what, and part of the problem with that.
I think the homeowner say isn't ready for prime time yet.
I agree.
Hi, I'm ready.
Well, so, Paul hit the nail on the head, we wanted to get your feedback on, you know, the direction moving forward, you know, keep doing repairs, is there a way to dangle that carrot, and you know, make it a partnership type thing? So, we've got a little bit more homework, we'll do, and, and bring this back to you guys in a, in a handful of months.
Or it's only, it's only confirmed.
And then give us some numbers too.
Yes, exactly.
And then, so that's what I was gonna say, so if you can, if you can bring me, if you can bring us the total amount of point repairs that are needed out there, because we're doing checks once a month, you should give, give me that, how many were already repaired, and they're being recurrent? And then, what I think is a easy solution, because I have walked the ponds in Great Way when I was in the ponds, because it's a long time. What I have seen a lot, it is that they do have downspouts, and they come all the way, like, three or four feet from the pond, and that's what's creating. If that's the case...
It's easier.
We'll be easier, because we, we will tell them, hey, you are encroaching on the LME.
And trespassing into our pond.
And so that, that we can hold them too. So, it is a lot of work, but if, but I'm thinking, if you go to the pond, and there's ten issues, and from those ten issues, three of them are, you know, yes, somehow forty, the water is going forty feet all the way down, and it's still creating this, I don't think that's happening, but if there's something shorter, then we can, we can hold them accountable because they are down.
It's very, it's very fact-specific. And you can take the bi-monthly newsletter that we put out, and maybe start to prep people for the value of doing this. You know, hey folks, we've spent seventy-one, twenty-one million dollars on your ponds, and our public works is looking at this, we can help ourselves, if.
But that's, that's not true, because we are not addressing the twenty, the twenty-one million dollar project, we are already addressing that issue, because if they have it, we're not connecting.
But how do we protect it the best?
But not all of them have it, so that's, that could be a challenge as well. There's a lot of scenarios in play.
This would be a good opportunity for us to, this is a, this is a workshop.
Your big, your bigger problem is, it's like on my house, you go in front of my house, you don't know that my two gutters on both sides are connected into the deals. Nobody has that information. So how are you gonna, how are you gonna get that information?
You can't go look.
How are you gonna see it? You just see it goes in the ground, you don't know where it goes.
Does it hit a splash pad, or is there something that?
No. The only thing you can do by is if you see a gutter, and the, the four-inch tile looks like it's heading toward the lake, that's the only thing, but you don't know that it goes to the lake.
I mean, Rosemont is a prime example of that. We, we, you know, they had downspouts, but we didn't know where they ended.
Well, it's like that house we just worked on.
Yes, exactly.
When you're looking at the end of your downspout, Ed, what do you see?
Do what now?
When you look at the end of your downspout, student's corner of the house, you, you got a four-inch tube going right straight into the ground?
Which we don't know where it goes. I know where it goes, but we don't know where it ends. We don't know who's connected to the, remember, we put in all the bubblers, and we came up with a deal that we were spending a lot of money putting in those bubblers, because people weren't using them. Well, the main reason people weren't using them is they don't have gutters.
And then also, another thing that's very different about Pelican Reserve in here is the oak trees. We have a, a huge quantity of oak trees, and then some of those homeowners are putting a perforator pipe somewhere now. And you know those oaks, they were straight to those pipes.
Perforator pipe.
And sometimes with one year, they would go in and crack it, and what we've seen, it literally looked like a pimp on the yard, because halfway into the yard, that connection was broken, and, and who's responsible? Homeowner, there's nothing to feel about it. So I think it's just, it's very risky, and it's a lot of, yeah.
It's a good conversation, and I'm glad we had it. We'll continue this on in the future, but it's...
And so again, there are a lot of...
It's not great to talk back.
So, I will say, I will say in the interim, Paul and Stephanie, you know, we're, we're working on drafting like a template, like a, a nice letter to say, hey, you know, our staff have identified this in our inspections, caused by you, please, you know, we'd be happy to be on site, but this needs to be resolved, just a nice letter, like an invitation, so.
I mean, if they really wanna do the work, then we ought to have, what, eighty-seven H O A? They can look at the H O A documents, and then they can find out specifically, do we have, can we do it or not? I mean, if you're gonna do the work, then some of them, you may not even have to have a nice conversation, because what you want is covered under the documents, like the query, and you're just gonna do it anyways. So it's a lot of work, and I don't think it's something they're gonna be able to do in three months, because there's a lot of H O As. Look at the documents, they're available online.
Good conversation.
Right, and just to clarify, we'll continue to contact the resident and see if we get cooperation. I mean, that's always gonna be our first approach.
We'll send Ed over, you just have to know.
I just, I just got done before.
You just give them the list.
So much fun, double.
All right, thank you, Paul.
Moving right along.
All right, back to the budget.
All right. So, anything else on the budget? Do you want me to read it officially, as well we did?
Is Stephen, is there any numbers?
Yes, Stephen.
He won't be able to until we get together, because I have a hundred numbers, so whatever you do, you...
You only have nine minutes between the two meetings, you know.
Yeah.
We'll get it to you by Monday.
So do you wanna read it, or let's go ahead and read it?
So the changes that are proposed, I, I have three takeaways from license, and what you want to do, but the, the changes that are proposed are, these are in the general fund. The littoral restoration, take that to twenty-five thousand. Parks and Rec Utilities Irrigation, take that to twenty-three thousand. Re- name U, 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 Utility Streetlights. License Plate Readers, we're still having those discussions. And then Chelsea has a takeaway as well, for streets we can cross, look into the list.
And the last add, I'm gonna, we've been talking, and Laura and I and Sheri have been talking about that hundred thousand dollars that you gave us. I think what we're gonna do is COLA, we're running some numbers, but I believe we'll be able to reduce that hundred thousand dollar, reduce it some, so, that way, but that is the approach, I think, we're gonna take to address the staffing, so.
Of all the options, and we looked at, that was one that looked like everyone, it would benefit everybody.
A percentage of stuff.
Yeah.
All right, so nothing else on the budget? Just looking at the guys, do you have anything else?
The only thing I have, certainly, thank you Carol for reminding me, make sure you guys do that ethics training, make sure you get that done, and then send your certificates to Laura and myself, please.
Did I send my ones to you?
Can we kick the can over the road?
No, you have to do it every year.
I know that, but I got, I still got four months.
End of the year.
End of the year.
End of the year.
But you have to do, you have to do it as soon as possible.
Easy to do, just turn it on, it's boring, then you go, just turn it on, do the other things.
But you didn't do that, you were paying attention the whole time.
I paid attention everywhere, and I took the test in the past.
Thank you, I saw the notes, yeah.
All right, I will send a reminder to you all tomorrow, with the link.
Don't send it.
Who's, you and Bob have taken it? I'll take it, and Doug?
Not you. Ed, Ed, for fifty bucks, I'll take it for you.
I asked you, I'll send it to the link again.
I'll go to you guys tomorrow.
All right, anything else, Chelsea?
No.
All right. This was already Tony.
Just a couple of things, I've been monitoring some of the new statutes that were adopted this year, and passed them on to Chelsea, we need to incorporate certain items in, in contracts. The legislature modified processes for processing change orders for construction services, a very short window. The owner signed it late June, effective July first, gotta love that. And then certain other things that the board can or cannot take into account when reviewing construction contracts. On the Gateway Greens, I got to Mark's answer this week, after one of our paralegals did some nice graphic work, closed final documents to wrap that up, Mark's double-checking it.
I told you, if you can get it done.
So that should be wrapped up, and ready to record, so I appreciate Mark's efforts on that. With regards to, L S I contacted Justin Tibo, L S I Companies, they do a lot of commercial work in the Commercial Realtor, just to see if he would have a group, maybe give a proposal to get some indications of value to parcels, that Colonial and Tree Line, because they're zoned general commercial under the Pelican Reserve Special Developmentary Regulations. I don't know if there are any other encumbrances on that, but I should get something back mid of the week or so, like an initial, basically a spitball indication for proposal, because I don't have all the information that he needs to be able to do.
Just on those signs?
Yeah, and the parcel, and there's two parcels. Because if you look at the urban photographs, you see these other up parcels up there, that are smaller than these parcels.
Yeah.
So developers, whether they can be used for additional parking, or for some other up parcel, like a small bank, small drive-through, again, L S I, there's a lot of nice commercial projects.
So while you brought that up, Doug, did you have any, you were gonna talk to some commercial realtors, and just see if there's any interest in anything, or?
Two like colonial signs, those.
There's two parcels.
The Tree Line and Colonial, the two monument signs, at St. Pelican Reserve?
Yeah, I, I did reach out to two people, I don't know, I have to get back, I don't think there was a lot of follow-up on that.
Okay.
And I did reach out to Lamar, which is a big billboard company, and I don't, they, they replied back and say that because of county or city codes and things, that it's... and say that because of county or city codes and things, that it's not possible. But I think Tony and I were talking like, for government, so.
Do you really want that?
Well, that is a potential revenue source if Pelican chose to keep the monument, keep those parcels and potentially pursue that if they so chose, Pelican, P PAC so chose, so.
You know, exploring all options.
Yeah.
And Doug, I'll be with you and chat about L S I also. Justin T. Boe, he puts on a seminar and conference each year also on market trends. Really nice people.
Well, if we could just, on a casual basis, keep it in the back of our minds and if an opportunity arises to mention it, mention it and just see if there's any interest.
Yep.
Most hooks have bait, I don't know if that hook has a bait, bait on it.
Well, honestly, I don't know if anybody is interested, I don't. I mean, maybe because of where it's located and the position and the size and everything. Nobody's gonna be interested in it ever.
That's it.
And again, that's part of the conversation with L S I, because again, as I look at it, I see a lot of redevelopment going on, see that here in Gateway. And I see that in Naples, where they're tearing down two-story buildings that have been around for three years, boom, they're putting something else up. I mean, they're taking down old bank buildings and putting a 7-Eleven. It's just redevelopment is really going on, big time. And again, you look at an area, you see those two parcels are larger than some of the out parcels in those shopping centers. And people probably don't even think that they're valuable because they think it's probably signed as part of that shopping center and not a separately owned parcel. On the criminal mischief case, the issue with regards to the tour, bought a big truck of the district facility, tearing everything up. Claudia received a call from Assistant State Attorney assigned to the case. She gave me, gave me my contact information and had a number of conversations. I had the name and telephone number of the defense counsel that the young man or his family had retained. And I'll be having conversations with, I talked to Chelsea and Claudia briefly, with that defense counsel the next week or week, for the next board meeting to have a conversation about compensation to the district and maybe come back to the board with a resolution of it at the next board meeting. The, it's a felony level criminal mischief case because of the amount of money involved, again. And I do appreciate the Assistant State Attorney. He was prosecutor, became a judge, retired, now he's back being a prosecutor, John Dury.
And this is criminal, not civil?
It's criminal, but the district could on its own do a civil case, but in the criminal case, restitution can be ordered or, and the expense of having a criminal case is, it's not inexpensive by the attorney for criminal cases.
You can turn.
No, well, it's, that's not inexpensive, by attorney for anything. Criminal cases are even more unique, believe me. With regards to, on Santa Lu, I sent another letter to the attorney for U S Home, and I think you saw that, gave him physically, tell us by August 15th what we're going to do. We'll come back to the board, I think we may end up having to sue U S Home for trespass and we'll find out who that vendor is. We need to find out who their vendor was, that's like the mystery, that may have gone along and crushed the pipe, which results in all the other.
You're talking about Santa Lu's?
Yeah, yeah, Santa Lu.
And it had to be the guy that was putting the saw down.
Yeah, nobody seems to know that person's name. But I do appreciate the cooperation of the attorney for the Santa Lu's Community Association, Robert Cooper, very helpful. Good working with them, so that's all I have.
Did we have proposals on Stoney Brook?
One other thing, yeah, sorry, I was gonna say, we are 99.99% there. This has been the week of nits. When U S Home finally came through and gave us information we've been waiting on for six weeks. And so I revised the agreement, it's effective date of August 8th, so Claudia can sign it again.
Margaret's here to sign it too.
And so Katie's been in the loop and Ellen's been in the loop and all those. And so U S Home's counsel finally gave us almost, we have one more blank to fill in, but I'm saying everybody signed regardless. And we made some other changes that U S Home wanted that were not substantive, but helped them, give them some comfort level, not detrimental to the district in my opinion, so.
But this is gonna be done by the end of July.
Well, it was done by, done by the Stoney Brook in the district in July pretty much. I think that's a fair statement, we've been working hard.
Is it gonna be done by August 8?
The.
Or 9?
Yesterday and today, we're going through and I was getting, finally getting feedback from counsel from U S Home, I was telling their edits need to be made, all because we changed the date to 25th, he needs to change the route, so I've been doing all that. So we're at the 99.99% point. And I do appreciate the counsel for Stoney Brook and so forth, we're very much working with them.
His question was, no.
We're there, we're almost there, Carol.
Whatever you want, Carol, what do you think?
It's a legal issue.
We're almost there, we are this close.
I learned, I learned not to put a date to this because they're gonna blow it out of the water either way.
I put a date, two weeks behind.
What was that famous person that said, "It ain't over till it's over"? Right, yeah.
We're counting down.
We were so optimistic, we put a date of July 25th in there and that didn't happen, so.
All right, anything else, Ed? Okay, so future board business, anybody, anything on the agenda management that you wanna add to Chelsea? Well, I think the next meeting's all about budgets and the town and the killing.
We'll have food for you at the next meeting because it'll be a late, it'll be a late one. But you'll notice that September, you know, a lot of things are, we really don't have much planned for the September meetings, but we'll keep plugging along.
When is the next workshop, present, I mean, present session?
October, October.
When, where's the next meeting, 23rd?
Here.
It is gonna be here, so we got an overflow.
I'm sure.
Sure, so we're here. Supervisor Tom and Carol?
Oh, yes. I was thinking about the Commons Park and one of the things, obviously, that you want is to be able for people to get there. Not, maybe not necessarily drive, but ride a bike, walk, run, whatever, whatever. And there's probably some areas where maybe something wasn't developed and you've got a break in the sidewalk somewhere or something else like that. And Pelican also has that area on Tree Line Avenue from where C-5 ends to where the Wynn Dixie Shopping Center starts, that there's no sidewalk. So you could get, you could cross at the light if you were on a bicycle or a golf cart or something like that. But you can't get over to the Wynn Dixie part because there's no sidewalk.
You gotta cross, gotta cross the road.
Right. Tony, is there any way that the district could fill in blanks like that?
Were you listening to the calls that Chelsea and I have been having with Laura on this for?
No.
I mean.
Because I've kind of asked you about this before and things have overcome it, so now I'm bringing it up with the meeting to be honest with you.
Yeah, we've had some conversations on the parcel along Tree Line, it's called C-4. And it's owned by Cameron, I think, and it's developing, being assessed by the district.
Well, no, no, I'm not talking about specifically one particular parcel. I'm talking about all of the areas in the gateway.
The district could do that, if it's in a public right-of-way or if the district has an easement, yes, the district could.
We could install that, but we would not be able to recoup it from the property.
That's correct.
We could not?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what, so I did reach out to City of, the unique of that parcel, that area specifically. Bob called me separately and asked me about that. Is, obviously, when they develop, they would be required to connect the two, the two points. Tree Line right-of-way is the county's, but the development order would be with the city. So I reached out to D O T Lee County and I asked, posed the same question. He told me what permits would be required by the county. I reached out to the city to see if they could connect the two. And the Public Works Circuit for the City kicked it to the engineer and I'm waiting to hear back from their city engineer.
Okay.
Yeah, part of the process is assuming there were not any sidewalks in that area.
There aren't.
No, well, the district could embark on a capital improvement project and you can make a determination as to, again, which properties benefit especially, particularly and peculiarly from that project. And you can say all the properties adjacent to it benefit and you may be able to have an assessment, either on a foot basis or square footage basis. But if the idea is to benefit all the properties in Gateway, then it'd be difficult to say that only these people have to pay that cost.
I would say that there are other areas in Gateway also where things haven't been developed, so sidewalks don't.
Right, right. Here's, here's part of the rationale for that. The counties and cities wait typically until there's a development order or a permit for something else. And part of the rationale for that is if you put any sidewalk today, an undeveloped parcel, when the developer comes in, you're gonna be having all this heavy equipment, you're gonna crush the sidewalk, it's gonna have to be reconstructed or rebuilt. I mean, I think that's part of the rationale that some local governments utilize.
I'm waiting to hear back from the city. I mean, they have road impact fees that there's no, I mean, you can always call your city council person to, you know, encourage them to do this and how it would benefit your community. I would strongly encourage you to do that, but I'm waiting to hear back from the city. I do think that we may be on the hook for a small portion along the front edge of that flowway there because of, so we may have to do our part, but that's gonna be smaller in the grand scheme of it, so.
Well, for you, Max.
Yeah.
So that was, so we'll just wait to hear from what the engineer says.
It's all doable, the question is who pays for it?
Yep.
And we have a dollar off, we have to, next Wednesday. Dollar's, dollar's gonna be at the powerhouse.
That's right.
So next Wednesday night, we'll bring it up there too.
And then the Sherman Soccer Complex. Ben, we've had discussions during the budget time about that and whatever. And I, not for this year's budget, nothing for this year's budget. Just leave everything the way it is. But looking forward, I think, my personal opinion is that I think we need to start looking at that as a profit generator, the soccer complex. And I would like to be able to get a 3%, at least a 3% return on investment there. So I was wondering if maybe in the next couple workshops that we could have staff bring us ideas, you know, maybe the Cadillac idea, the Chevy idea and the Pinto idea.
I like the fly. You're looking at 3%, you'll be, I just wanna break even at this point. But 3%, I'm in, you tell me where to go.
Well, I, I think it's, it's not gonna be a simple idea. I think there'll be many component parts. But I think if next year at this time, we want to at least break even and maybe the year after start making money on it, we've gotta start figuring this out now. And it's, it's a large asset to the district and I just think it wouldn't hurt us to start right after we adopt this budget and start doing workshops on what can we do there, how much is it gonna cost, what kind of revenue can we get back? It'll be a big project for the staff to take on. But I think it's time to do it now. That's it? Go ahead.
She's been dreaming. I want some of the stuff you're drinking.
Water, water, buddy, water.
I don't think there's any way in the hell you're ever gonna make money off that deal, but anyway, I don't have anything.
All right. Well, if that's the goal, you can find a way.
I can get two.
You guys, Bob?
I got two small things. First, Ed Hedges took it upon himself, he's P PAC, to research easements related to irrigation. This was a Chelsea request and I believe he did a yeoman's job on it. And so all of the easements for our cabinets, our electrical drives and all that stuff will soon be part of our Pelican G I S map. The second thing is, what is the current status of the admin building? Are we ahead of schedule, behind schedule?
We're on schedule, they're still shooting for April completion. We have hit some hiccups, obviously with the rains and trying to pour footers. You're gonna start to see the playground go up this month and they're flooding along, so.
Okay, and then we talked one time about the amphitheater as a, did we just defer?
Phase, phase, phase.
That's future, future phases.
So it's not a current thing till we get past the budget?
It's not.
And down.
Okay, no, are you, okay.
27, 81.
Okay, thank you, that's all I had.
Okay. Just two requests, if we, because I know you touched on e-bikes and motorcycles, that. The County Sheriff's Office, and I think I sent it to you, the County Sheriff's Office just put out a presentation video. So I would share that, it's an educational video telling like, you know, what they can do, what they cannot do. If you could share that on our website and on Instagram, that'd be great. Question, when we were doing the Lake Bank restoration, I know we kinda talked about this, I talked about with Daniel. What type of saw that we were placing it on?
Supposed to be home and office.
We are. What type of saw they're using?
That'll be used in Florida town.
Well, wait, Floratown is what they're currently have, but Florida town is what is sensitive to the Shuikim Museum.
Well, they could use one of the.
So Palmetto is the same price.
Citroen.
Citroen is more expensive.
Palmetto is more expensive than Florida town because I just had the same conversation with Met Tower for need a box replacement process.
Okay, so I'm going to challenge you on that one with, because there's only two vendors.
My doctor, off the malice.
There's two vendors on this side.
Send me those, please.
There's two vendors that provide for this side of Florida, they can certify because a lot of people say, yes, Palmetto, but you really don't know unless you have this unit of plant tested. So there are only currently two vendors in Florida that can provide it. Excuse me, do you mind taking that call outside?
Sure, so, but anyway, it's.
Send me those two vendors, please.
So those are two, and the price is the same. They do have a minimum, the only difference is that they do require a minimum order, so it has to be at least a trip, a semi-trip.
That's what they order.
Would you, that's what you order anyways. Because what's happening is, the more and more I see in the communities, when it starts getting cooler, within one year of changing that saw, that saw guy, I'm not mentioning it, it's around the area. So if we're spending the money, I want us to go ahead with the Palmetto, so we don't have to worry about it.
Send me, the only vendor that they found on that east coast, so send me. Send me the two vendors that you have.
Okay.
This is, this is, this is Palmetto, not Citroen.